Call the order of meeting. Oops, sorry. Now I'll call the order of meeting of November ninth, Columbia Plant and Commission. Well, ask Dan to get the invocation and we'll all rise and do the pledge of allegiance.
Lord, we thank you for the privilege to live in your presence and to work with you to build a better community. Help us to do right and to deal fairly with all of our citizens. Give us the faith and courage to put our trust in you. In your name we pray. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag. Dan, if you could call the roll, please.
Scott?
Here.
Bryce?
Here.
Ted?
Here.
Tucker?
Here.
Rick?
Here.
Mark?
Here.
You've all received minutes of the October twelfth meeting. Is there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, they'll stand as approved. We have no old business, so we'll move right into new business. First item is a site plan review. Melissa Poland seeks a plant commission approval to open a restaurant, Sweet Melissa's Good Eats at eighty-five Town Center Avenue, Suite A. Melissa here? Uh, Nick's out in the hall, okay. Well? Second item on the agenda is a site plan review. Geez, I forgot already. John.
Our, our, our.
Our Forest seeks the plant commission's approval to build storage units on the property for sale at the corners Springfield Road and State Route fourteen. Would you like to come up and tell us a little bit about your project?
Hello, this is John. My name is Bill. We're looking to possibly do storage units there on that piece of property. It sits down low. Um, it's off of fourteen kind of borders that Springfield area. We see that there's a lot of demand here. There's a lot of houses, a lot of people coming to Columbia. We know that there's a lot of people having to leave Columbia and go to the Youngstown area for their storage needs. We drove around, we estimate that there's around three hundred to four hundred storage units in this area that are all at full capacity. Causing the problem that people have to leave this area to go elsewhere, trying to fix that need. One other problem that we see as a need too is the security for some of the units around here. All of the facilities that we were able to go to, we were able to get in. Now, this one here, we would like to have a faster, kind of build the structure in a way so it's able to enclose itself with security cameras, uh, keypad gate, everything to make sure that all of the contents inside the residence of Columbia have are secure and safe. The property is zone C four. Any questions that you guys have?
Guys, anybody got any questions?
Didn't we look at this before? What different, a different, a different person?
Well, if you're on a C four, remember that this would fit better in my two.
So what was our concern that we brought up last time?
We, I have the property in the minutes.
Three or four months ago.
It's been April thirteenth minutes.
That was in the past.
That was in the.
Item seven.
Item seven, yeah. It sits low to the ground.
Yeah.
Almost by, uh, it, it, there's a good rock there, so it's gonna be a difficult call for us to put anything there for side storage. Cause we can build it up so storage units would be fine, but anything else like an office building in that area. I know why. I like the property a lot. I wanted to do something there. Wasn't sure what I could do there and then I, I have a lot of friends that live in this area and they had to go elsewhere to go buy storage. That'd be a perfect use to repurpose this land for.
We also want to make it nice. Houses behind there and we all wanted to.
We want to have a nice.
We don't want it to be a nice store for people that are really used to.
Want to make sure that there's a nice buffer with landscaping and everything, at least dress it up. That's something that I submitted photos of what we want the storage units to look like. We're looking for a skilled structure, uh, cement block with like a decorative block on there. Dress it up. We're not looking for a wood structure, anything that could be a nice store.
Just gonna have the one end grass and egress off of Springfield Road there?
Correct, yes.
I think that's a lot safer.
Uh, yeah, but then I, by measure, um, I was trying to think of how far from the turn that would be. That would be a good hundred, hundred and fifty feet, maybe two hundred?
Could be, yeah, and that turn off.
As you turn off of fourteen.
Correct, onto Springfield.
Correct.
Do you have a nice distance?
There's a, there's a couple of football fields before you're able to get to it.
Is that far out?
Yeah.
Because you have the other building across the street there. You're basically across the street.
From Columbia to the old floral place there.
Yeah, so you're almost that far.
Parallel with the entrance to get into the little flower mill.
Have you purchased the property yet?
Wait, it looks like we're going into phase right now, right?
I believe we tabled it the last time because of the C four when we felt, actually in, in the code book, it, it doesn't fit until an I two. So.
Now, would that still be if we're not looking to do anything outdoor? Cause our understanding under a C four could be possibly indoor storage? Not looking to do cars or, uh.
RVs or anything like that. Nothing outdoor.
That'd be a nice one. I would want that.
You know, you see those, you, you see those, and, and again, whoever's housing them, it doesn't matter, but.
Yeah.
It, it seems to be the same, you know, once you have somebody to leave one outside for a season, it seems to stay there.
Exactly.
And I don't think we've, none of us want to see that.
Not in like a main road area.
Correct.
Of course, you have a lot of traffic coming in here.
Won't even have spots for them to be able to park in.
My, my biggest concern is that this is an area that has sewer and water and all the utilities. And typically, as a, as a, I hate to see a, a property that that valuable be used for something. Typically, many storages are built where there's just electricity and there's no sewer, no water, no nothing. To me, it concerns like it's, it's a little bit of a, a low value. For a seat. And an industrial lot does not necessarily have to have a sewer and water. That, that's kind of why, from my understanding, why I'm, I'm opposed to seeing mini storage in C versus industrial.
If you drive by the lot, it deeps off in the road quite a bit. For you to actually u- utilize that entire parcel, you'd have to bring in a lot of dirt, like fill dirt. Or have to move the land a lot. That's kind of my thought.
You have to, you have to do underground water storage stuff, so no, no matter what.
Yeah, yeah.
So the, the building, the pad being low doesn't matter because you put underground storage underneath it.
I think the difficulty to do something, and I'm not a, I just, we, we just moved a lot of property. We got to spend. Hundreds of thousands of dollars just to move dirt, get dirt removed. They had too much. The biggest problem, I ca- I went out there and we looked at the property. It, if you go walk the property, you're sitting down a group four to five feet. It is difficult enough to try to figure out how to bring, cause when I first looked at it, it was hard for me to try to figure out how to bring cars in and out of it, how to build it up because of that slope. I looked at it, you know, can you, hey, and like you said, I agree with you. It's a nice spot there and has everything there. I just couldn't figure out anything else to do with it. And then the way it bottomed next to the one corner, part of that was kind of dead property because behind the. There must be a Masonic temple. Behind there, as you're going back, it narrows out pretty hard.
With it being low, you start to do stormwater, so that, I mean, you're gonna have to build it up no matter what. Um, and I just was at an auction, um, this past week, an industrial property in Columbia just sold for forty thousand dollars an acre. I love property to be, to be used for something, um, but I'm not a hundred percent sold on.
How do you feel would fit in with the residential, how, like Jason?
I think that's where we're going at, that we want to make sure that there's a nice buffer. That we want to do it in such a way that we make the storage units not look like it's an industrial park. We want it to make it look like it's, it's into that C four category. So if you make them look nice storage units and put a nice buffer of landscaping, whether it be pine trees or whatever, it might be along that, uh, bordering property that divided out. Maybe even do your retention area, that area to the pond.
You actually have a tree line that goes across the back residential. We were looking at more doing. Try to figure out the cost difference between split block versus something at least that makes it look more dressed up that in a sense you really don't know. Part of the business is a commercial.
That is a good point too. When you walk the property here, it's a nice buffer of streams that are already existing and actually access privacy for all the people in Columbia.
The last thing we want to do, to be honest with you, and I understand trying to keep the beauty of everything across, well, we. We do too many things.
The issue here is that, uh. On twelve eighty-eight oh two six D, uh, public storage, garages and yards don't come in till I two. That's where they begin. And this is a C four. So, so that, that's the issue we have.
But you read the very, the very first thing of C four is that the purpose of a C four district is to provide for uses in addition to those specified in C three districts. So C four is in uses in addition to C three.
Right.
And C three is uses in addition to C two and probably on and on down the list.
But, but you don't come up with.
Till I two.
Oh, I know, but, well, no, no, but I'm saying is, storage doesn't seem to fit in the jurisdiction of a, of a.
Commercial.
It just doesn't, no.
I mean, unfortunately, C four also says it allows for display and showroom specifically, but it also states where the merchandise sold is stored someplace else. So that's even basically saying you're not supposed to have a large storeroom with a display area. So when you look at that, I would agree, you're needing to look at I two. Now, one of the problems I think that you're gonna have with that is I two requires a one hundred foot setback. So if they were able to do that, you're almost gonna need a variance from that setback.
Well, I two versus re- residential and what.
I two's industrial.
Right, but I two versus R, I mean.
Yeah, no, versus the commercial.
Versus the commercial, right? Right.
Looking back at our minutes, so this is property we was talking about once before, back in April of this year. And we had a pretty lengthy discussion as to can it fit in an I two, can it fit in a C four? And that individual actually was talking about storing like RVs and other things like that on that property. And it got down to the point where I specifically remember asking him, how many of these units are gonna be set aside for vehicle storage? How many are gonna be set aside for personal self-storage? And that's kind of where I think us as a commission made the determination that that was going to be more of an I two department there in that area under public storage and garage. But that was back in the Zoom days. I remember it was before we were here in the chambers, but that was, we had a really lengthy discussion trying to figure out, should it fit in an I two? Should it fit in a C four? And I think that's why we made the ultimate decision to table it that night.
Yeah, for us, that would not be the problem. We're not looking to do anything outdoors, nothing with RVs. My first thing from a business standpoint, rising just takes up too much square footage. I would much rather, it is nicer.
But that's how we were trying to fit it into a C four though, because under C four, you're able to have. Uh, automobile, truck, trailer, boat, farm, implement, sales, service and storage, both new and used. So that's where we were trying to see, okay, well, maybe if they're more of a automobile storage area.
But that says, that actually says service and storage.
Service.
Service, comma, storage.
Right.
You're talking about an automobile dealership.
Yeah, that's what you're talking there.
Right.
Now, if we would open up the possibility of having designated spots for vehicles, maybe cars in the winter time when you would like to park them.
I think that's a, I, I, I think, I think the biggest thing you guys are looking at that you don't want them, you don't want.
About cars indoors.
Basically, what we're looking to want to do, and this is why we didn't want, we wanted to come through the commission first before we did something or bought something and then all of a sudden we're not.
Right.
So, and we wanted to know what you, your guys' thoughts were across the board. I don't. I'm not looking, and this is me personally, I don't want to have trailers, uh, trucks, things. It, it makes it look like I got a junkyard for you guys in the front yard there. And we're not looking, we were looking to put up three to four hundred storage units in there, storage units all day, dress it up for landscaping, whatever we can do across the board with that. And it was something that you guys were. We had no problem doing that. We understand what you're looking for and his thoughts on the property. I just looked at the property and built it and suddenly I wanted to try something cause I had this that he had and was fine to do this here. And he looked at property all over. This was the nicest, per se, larger piece of property beside here to try and do something. But the last thing we would do is try to make it help where you should. Cause you have too much traffic going down the street and the biggest thing we wanted to do is look nice.
And, and my point was just being that we try and get everything to fit. You know, we don't want to turn anybody away. But when we made that determination the last time that we just felt it was suited better in an I two. Our other storage facilities in town, like the space center down south of here and another one out in around fourteen are also I twos.
I really think that's where it has to fit, to fit in the book. And we'd love to have you if you can find a piece of I two prime, come on by.
Appreciate your time.
I ought to make a motion.
Move the table.
Okay, second. I have a motion, second. Dan?
Who made the second? Scott?
Yes, the table.
Bryce?
Yes, the table.
Ted?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Like I said, I'm a piece of I two and we'd love to have you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
Mine's on.
It's on how to push it back when we got the book out. Yeah. Find it. Okay, we'll go back to item A, I think, yeah. Site plan review, Melissa Poland seeks the plant commission's approval to open a restaurant, Sweet Melissa's Good Eats at eighty-five Town Center Avenue, Suite A. Come on up, tell us what you want to do.
Which I was being late, I'm not very familiar with.
That's fine, that's fine. It's kind of off the beaten path.
It, it is.
I, I can start.
Okay.
I think you guys know generally the project we're talking about there. So, um, was really the first person that came that was interested in the space, so we, uh, down the path, um. Space, but kind of dawned on me, last time I was here, I hadn't come before, she hadn't come before the commission, so. I had to do things in first a bit, but, um, you know, I, I think my objective is to, to, to fill my project with quality people that have quality products that I think are in the area. Started the project, I wanted to start the project with somebody that I had confidence in. Melissa, uh, has a, has a shop in Boardman and it's been very, very successful and especially successful through this pandemic that we have, so.
Market Street, isn't it?
As.
Okay.
You know, as I have started doing business down here and now lived down here, I, I've seen you guys need just more lunch places, a variety of eateries and food options and so. That person thinks that she'll be great down here. Questions for, for that?
What hours are you thinking about operating? How do, how do you function that way?
Uh, we're primarily a lunch spot, so I was thinking for down here, we would start at eleven o'clock in the morning and go until six. Because we do know that this is a community where a lot of people go outside of the community and work and they live in this community. So, um, we'll keep the kitchen open until six. We're gonna be open Tuesday through Saturday. And that's just to kind of hit those people that like to travel to Columbia because you are a destination location. A lot of people like to come to your area. But, um, I have a lot of traffic from this area and also, um, your whole county, Columbia County. So I think it's a really good fit for Sweet Melissa's to come down to this area. The kind of food that we do is a little bit different from a lot of other places. I pride myself on, everything is made from scratch, from, um, the vinaigrettes to everything in our deli. How we do our chicken, how we prep all of our vegetables. So it's been a hit. It's very, very, uh, the community in Boardman has. They have embraced us and supported us and like Nick was saying, we actually saw growth during the pandemic because of the way we do the food. I don't tell people it is, um, fast food or it's healthy food. I usually tell people it's better. It's better to eat for you because it's made from scratch, basically.
Okay, any question, other questions?
What, what percentage takeout? You have takeout and?
Yes, we have dine-in, we have takeout. We also have a service that is an online service. So you download a free app, you link a credit card to it, you order online, you pay online and all you do is come and you pick it up. My, my takeout is at least, it's gotta be at least forty percent. And probably thirty, thirty, thirty-five percent is also the online service that we have. That's just a really easy grab and go. And that was the service that we saw the most growth in because nobody wanted to be in a place for a very long period of time during the pandemic. We au- we offered curbside, but a lot of people were just like, I'll come in, grab my food and I'm going right back out. They don't have to talk to anybody.
So you don't have a drive-through? You don't have a, a drive pickup window? You will have a drive pickup window?
Yeah.
It won't be, uh, like a.
Right, right, but it'd be a, a drive, a drive pickup window. And what is your specifically, what are you, what are you popular for for your food?
I'm sorry?
What is your, what are you popular for for your food? What's your, what's your lunch? I mean.
We do wraps and salads.
Okay.
Salads are wonderful.
Thank you.
But I can't get to Boardman by five o'clock to get them, so I'm looking forward to having them in Columbia.
I am coming to you.
Are you gonna look at having a beer or liquor license or anything like that?
Oh, no.
Okay.
I have no interest in that.
Okay, I just didn't know if staying a little bit, open a little bit later, you're gonna get into that or not? Okay.
I'd like to move approval of the, uh, Sweet Melissa Good Eats at eighty-five Town Center. I'll second. I have a motion in a second. Dan, if you would, please.
Bryce?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Rick?
Yeah, it's for Diane.
Scott?
Yes.
Yeah, let me know what day you open.
Okay, I'll be there. I will let you know.
When are you thinking about opening?
Uh, probably, uh, the second week of January and that is because our Boardman location is so popular right around the holiday season. We do a lot of carryout or catering and we also do corporate lunch boxes. And I just, I have to make sure that my staff and that the business is, we get through the holiday season and, and wi- without, you know, any problems at all. And then we're gonna concentrate down here in Columbia. So I'm bringing some of my really good people with me and, uh, so hopefully it'll all go smoothly.
You want to say anything?
I don't need salad.
That kind of guy.
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Good luck.
Thanks, Nick. Item C is a vacated alley. Josh Winhardt, three eight two Firestone, seeks the plant commission's approval to move forward with plans to vacate the alley that runs behind his house and continue south to Parkview Drive. Now, Josh?
Yeah, I just, I talked to all the neighbors and, um, the alley's grown up with trees and, um, it's not used and we'd kind of like to just make sure it never is used, so that would be my reason, obviously. I don't know if you have maps of the.
Yeah, we should all have a map.
So yeah, it's just east of Firestone running parallel with it. Um, goes behind the Nazarene Church parsonages. They own most, a lot of my neighborhood owns a lot, lots. I, I own three, so.
Okay.
What I'm after.
So what, basically what we're doing here is making a recommendation to council to close this alley. You know, we can't, we can't close it, but we're making a recommendation to council.
Or he can file a petition, one or the other.
Okay.
Two ways you can do it. Josh, you can actually file a petition with council to close it or council can do so on its own. It's probably simpler for you if council does it on its own, but, you know.
No, that's fine.
You'll have to decide which way you want to, which way you want to do it. After that, it's similar as far as there has to be notice published for six weeks. And then basically council can decide.
So would I just go to council then or just notify someone or how would I go about that?
Or should we make a recommendation to council?
You can make a recommendation then. If you then want to avoid, that way he wouldn't have to make or file a petition.
Yeah, twenty twenty-one has been, uh, you know, alley, getting rid of alleys or concentrating on alleys.
Yeah, yeah, it's been a lot of alley movement there.
So all your ne- none of the neighbors had a problem with it at all so far?
No, I went down the whole street and I went to like the Nazarene Church and talked to Pastor Jane and he was more than in favor, so.
Okay, if you look, I looked, I looked it up on the GIS and we do have some utilities at the south end of. Yeah, so we would have to have a right of way or an easement for those utilities.
Right, I think there is one house.
If I could, I looked at it and it looked like it went to three fifty Firestone or three seventy-three Elm. It's looked like the depth to me is where the right of way would need to go.
So if we vacated, how would we, would half the alley on each side go?
Right, just, just like we did.
Basically, when you vacate an alley, this alley runs north-south, so the owner's on east-west all the way up would basically acquire.
Okay.
A portion of that property. The alley ceases, you know, then ceases to exist.
What's alley's name?
Doesn't have one.
Doesn't even have one.
No, like they had to close it, you know, north of me. The alley had, looks like it would have ran through there also.
I don't know if it did have a name.
Sometimes you find them all weird names.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I couldn't find one.
I don't think the alley behind my house has a name.
No, those were, I'll call them paper alleys. They were put on. Because again, if you go back far enough, the houses all had garages that were in the alleys. Nobody had an attached. because again, if you go back far enough, the houses all had garages that were in the alleys. Nobody had an attached garage. That's why you had all those alleys that were planted.
So you got access to the garage.
Yeah.
Right, off the alley.
Yeah, off the alley.
If you look at this, this line of site, like Bryce would just mention, it looks like it's been a long time because there's nothing but tree lines.
Oh, yeah, it's.
No, it's never, I don't think it's ever been opened as an alley. It just has existed on the original plaque.
Yeah, and on our deeds, you know, it's a twenty-foot alley behind your.
Yep.
House. I have that soccer field at the Nazarene Church. A lot, a lot of kids play in that.
It's probably on the.
Oh, yeah. It's, I think it makes sense.
Yeah, I think, I I think it makes sense. I mean, we don't need it. We just need an easement at the, at the south end of it.
Yep.
So those people could not do any building on it or anything like that, but but I don't know how it goes up to the other end.
No, you're not gonna be adding that much to anybody's property.
It's probably a twenty-foot alley.
Yeah, so what you basically end up with is you guys get a little more land, which by the way, you'll get to pay real estate tax on.
Right.
But there's never gonna be any street, never gonna be an alley. It won't exist even on paper.
Right. Do we need to approve to recommend it?
Yeah, I think we should. It would be the easiest way to do it.
I'll prove to recommend it then.
Okay. So we have a motion. We have a second?
Second, that.
We have a motion and a second. Dan, if you would, please.
Ted?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
All right, you got the ball rolling.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Go your alley.
Yeah.
Item D, we have a site plan review. Melinda Wetten, Wettenberger, owner of Barefoot Beach, seeks a planning commission's approval to relocate and open her business at one four four one five South Avenue, Unit Z. Melinda, you here?
Yes.
Okay.
It's actually Unit One.
Okay.
Oh, man, we can't throw it on. Changes everything.
So basically, you're moving?
Yeah, I own Barefoot Beach behind Newton's Gas Station.
Okay.
I was there for four years. I outgrew the location. I only had four parking spots, and it's hard to park a hundred and thirty-five customers a day in four spots.
Okay.
So I went and looked out at Arrowhead Commons. I talked to Matt. I acquired a unit, and I'm just waiting to get in. My beds are in, my walls are up. I'm waiting for the okay for the electric to get going.
Okay, so basically you're operating the same business you operated there.
Yes, I've, it's still Barefoot Beach. I have strictly tanning, spray tanning, and I do have a little boutique in there, like clothing, candles, and some craft goods.
Okay.
How far, how much you are expanding your uh your business?
Oh, I'm going from, what was it, eight hundred and twenty-five square feet to thirteen hundred and seventy-two?
But you're, you're really making money by the number of beds of which you operate, right?
Um, well, I had six beds in the old location, and I actually put in another one, so I'm gonna have seven beds in there now.
Thank you.
And as you can tell, I haven't been tanning because I've been closed up since fifteenth of July.
What is that area out there zone? We need to make sure that.
C four.
It's C four. Okay.
So it, you know, it should fit.
No, no, I just wanna make sure, I make sure that with that, with that plaza coming along and stuff, we wanna make sure the zoning matches what they're planning to do out there.
Like they're doing, right? I'm assuming with the expanded parking, that's only gonna help. I'm sure with only four.
Oh, yeah, cuz I'm.
Right.
The only one there for right now.
Right, and the four spots probably hurt you over the years.
Well, and then, not to be a downer, but when the ice cream trailer went in, ice cream people thought they could park in front of the salon, so then my customers were calling because there was no place to park.
I don't know if that's.
So then, when you got people that already paid for something and there's no place to park, they wanted me to extend their packages, so that was making me lose money.
Right.
But I, I bought it in September of two thousand and seventeen, and I actually went from seventy-five customers on the books to four hundred and fifty on the books right now.
Good for you.
Good, very good.
It's a lot of hard work because I'm there from open to close. My daughter-in-law helped me out, and when the pandemic hit and we got shut down, that hurt me because it was over prom season, wedding season. I lost fifty thousand dollars in twenty twenty, so when we did reopen, I owe, I worked open to close. So I figure that's what I'm gonna do now, because I've been down since July now. That way I can put money back into my business.
Just so you understand, C four allows C one and C two, C two personal services, so this would fit.
So it fits. Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions? Somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Dan, if you would, please.
Tucker?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Very good.
Very good.
Okay.
You're all, you're all set.
No, I just, well, I just got a phone call saying that we're hoping for an onsite inspection, so if everything goes good.
Very good.
See you guys.
Thank you.
Last item on the agenda is discussion of short-term rental regulations. Start this a little bit, talk about it. I guess it's time to do something.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
Okay. As I uh reviewed the draft I had done before the last time you looked at this, um, I made a decision. I then told Lance about it afterwards, and it was a unilateral decision which can always be changed. I did not, and if you read through this, you'll notice that I didn't put what zoning district it would be in. I did that intentionally, not because I forgot. My intentional, I reasoned was, if we put it in here, then anytime you change anything in the zoning code or in the code, you have to go through the procedure for an amendment to the code itself, which means public hearing, and it takes quite a bit of time. If it's in the enabling legislation such as an ordinance or resolution where this is adopted, my thought was it would be easier to change if that was your decision. Now, on the other hand, that's option one. Option two, if you wanted to say just C four or C whatever, it can, you know, that can be added, but I kind of left it out so that you know, I kind of felt, okay, the procedure for an amendment to the code is a little bit time-consuming, and I didn't know if that's what you would want to go through anytime you decided where someone sitting up here made a decision, well, maybe we should expand it. On the other hand, if you think, let's leave it just in commercial, then I can put that back in. So those are my preparatory comments.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I did a little looking in the book. Uh, R two is lodging house and boarding house. Of course, that's long-term. That's not short-term. Uh, we don't do anything to C one. Uh, C one, you get a bed and breakfast, which is, I would consider about the same.
Similar.
Similar. You get breakfast out of that deal. There Airbnb you don't, so.
That is a difference.
So that, that's.
No host.
Yeah, no host, right?
One site.
So that's just kind of where I'm, I'm thinking they ought to fall in, start with a C and and it makes it easy to control, and that's, that's my opinion really ought to be.
What's our ultimate goal? Not to allow? We have to have an ultimate, I think.
Well, what you have to look at is, a- a- and that's a very good question, Tucker. I think what, what you all have to decide is how structured do you want this? Um, and I think I said at the last meeting, you know, there's all kinds of limitations you can place on this. For example, in Dublin, Ohio, you're allowed to do it two weeks out of the year, possibly during the memorial tournament and the week before. That's it. Um, other places limit the number of buildings that could be in whatever district. Uh, so you know, you can do whatever you want. You can limit it by district. Obviously, part of this is that you know who's doing it and that whoever is doing it is accountable. Um, you know, uh, if any of you have ever been in an Airbnb, I have, thanks to my millennial children. Um, you know, it's a little bit different than a hotel that I probably would be used to. If you've got a bad host, you know, then how do you get a hold of that person? Because sometimes you can't get a hold of the person that's the host, so one of the requirements is you're gonna have to be able to get a hold of somebody. Also, they're going to have to file for a license or permit on a yearly basis so that August knows who's doing what. Um, limit the parking. Now, the way I've worded it, it sounds like every one of these would have a garage. Well, if they don't, we can change that, but I think one thing you have to consider is, I don't care if it's in commercial or residential, whoever is there has to be cognizant of the fact that there's neighboring property owners and some of whom may not be thrilled with the fact that this is a short-term rental, so you limit the number of cars. Uh, you also limit the number of people so that, you know, this isn't a flop house for the night where somebody decides, you know, um, gee, I think we're gonna go to someplace and we're all, twenty of us are gonna stay in this six hundred square foot home. You know, um, that's not the idea. So, you know, what I tried to do was look at some other ordinances. There aren't as many out there as you would think uh at this point, but get an idea and then try to put, you know, here's, here's a framework. We can add things to it. We can take things out of it. So what I think you have to decide is, what do you want it to accomplish?
My opinion is we need to keep the Airbnb out of R one. That's me, my ultimate, I'm strictly going through the codes. My ultimate goal is protect R one neighborhoods. Okay, R two, you start getting multi-units, you can get a little bit more of apartment complexes and stuff like that. I don't know if we're concerned about that, but my ultimate goal is no Airbnb in R ones.
Well, R two is, R two is, there's no uh complexes, I don't think. It's not the R three.
It's multi, it's two-family.
It's two-family.
It's air, it's bed and breakfast.
But if you look at the R two areas, they're what a lot of us think might be R one, and they're not. They're R two.
Right, well, and that's.
So.
We make it down to R two, that's fine, but bare minimum, we need to protect the residential neighborhoods. That's our ultimate goal, is to keep from having that problem and putting it in, and I appreciate all the energy and work you did, and I, you wanna put it on the front end before it becomes an issue, then trying to fight something on the back end that we're backing our, our.
Most definitely, yeah.
And that's, that's.
You do, that's why, again, I can add to this, you know, I really want everybody to take a look at, and I'm not saying, gee, we can't make any changes. This is it. Uh, no, we can make any changes you want. This is a framework.
And if you do it for R one and R two, I mean, then that's, it's.
Then you have to look at, okay, how many do you want? If you, the one, the ordinances that I saw that were allowing in R one and R two, that's where they're starting to limit. How many places there are, how close together they are.
I think it's just being, no, not allowed in R one, R two. Okay, if you want, if you want to do this, and if you're, if you're in an old house, you wanna do it something else, and then you wanna get up on Main Street, you go to a commercial area and 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 change the zoning because it's not a commercial, or a commercial area or something like that, but you, you've gotta keep it, we've got a great community. Lot, people love to live here. There's so many amenities to this town, okay? And with the amenities, these things are gonna start popping up. I think we need to protect the citizens and the neighborhoods from allowing them to pop up in the area they shouldn't be in. Okay, great.
R two bed and breakfast is conditional use. It's not permitted, it's conditional use.
And what Maple's doing out there, that's, that's commercial, right?
Yes.
Those are commercials, so that, those are.
That's C four.
Doing this, doing, let's say, let's, 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 we're new to this R one, R two. Is there anything out there right now that would make them in non-compliance? Is there anything we're facing right now, we've seen right now?
That would make what? Maple?
Uh, no, anybody doing that in non-compliance.
Is it being done?
Is it being done?
We were aware of some people that wanted to do it.
Right.
But I don't know, I certainly don't know of anybody that is doing it. Now, August may, Lance may.
I think there was one on Union Street that was interested in doing it at one time.
Right.
It was, they didn't pursue.
Right.
Yeah.
They.
Yeah. I'd much rather them sell the house to another family that wants to move into it than.
Right.
Turning into a money-making machine in the residential neighborhood.
You mentioned Firestone. You know, the structures are actually under construction right now, and I kind of thought as I went out there last Friday night, gee, this would be kind of, you know, I can see somebody deciding, hey, we're gonna rent one of the houses, we're gonna stay here, and you know, what a perfect little,
Yeah.
you know, little place to do that. So that, to me, fits, and it's a commercially zoned area. Again, your call.
Again, I don't think it should start till a commercial property. That's my opinion.
Well, but then you think about R three, so if you go to something that's heavy, that's like apartment complex.
Right.
There, there's a lot of people in and out of those things, so is really something that you rent for a couple nights really any different?
No, but we've got R three areas that probably have a lot of single family in them too, so that's what you start looking at, you know.
I was just gonna point out, R three is the Firestone neighborhood, and then the potential development out at the old lakefront golf course property.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be a single-family home.
No, he's got a bunch of different ideas, I think.
There's a lot of different ideas. I'm not sure if anything's finalized. I mean, that's a great example. Do you want, you know, is that where you would envision seeing it? You know, think of the people that haven't bought the homes there. Is that where they envision seeing it?
I'd much rather look at any R threes that we have that don't, that don't fit R three, making them down to an R two and control those neighborhoods that way rather than.
Now, I'd like to use the KISS method here. Keep it simple. You know, it's just, you know. Any other ideas?
So our fire department, we had this discussion, remember in the old days, we always had to have a fire inspection on the new when somebody would come in to apply for uh, you know, having a business, and I think it was Tucker, but a long time ago, that, you know, do we have the qualifications to do that?
Correct.
Fire department has these qualifications.
And that's, you know, that language is in there, but that's a good point to discuss. Do we have that? Do we wanna get? And do we wanna get into that correct?
Yeah, do we want that liability?
Like I said, you can regulate these, uh, this idea to the nth degree.
Fire department, if, if they come in and something happens, you have a fire, and you have a fire chief that approves something without having training and code reviews and all that stuff, you open up the kit, the city just to a huge liability.
That's right.
you've opened up the kit, the city just to a huge liability, that's right, and that's, I don't, in all my experience, we don't wanna do that, we don't have, we're not trained to do that, no, we have a voluntary fire, we have to. We gotta pay, who's gonna pay?
Right.
You know, it's all kinds of questions.
I've come up against some fire chiefs that know the code and know their stuff, and they know NFP thirteen or whatever it is, and they, they've schooled me on s- stuff.
Thank you, Dan.
You think it's all, all ours?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, you know, uh, bed and breakfast is conditional use in R three, so, you know.
Which means that the bed and breakfast has to fit
Yeah.
in the area, and it, that doesn't mean it's an automatic, right?
It gives the resident some chance to, you know, put in their.
Correct. You know, conditional use isn't, as you all know, isn't an automatic.
That, that could be done for the, your short-term rental, because it's basically the same, or, or we can stick with just commercial, in my opinion. If we stay with commercial, it makes it easy.
But you have home occupancies that are conditional in R three.
Pardon?
You have home occupancies that are conditional in R three, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
We can always start with C, and then if, you know, there's a desire to go down to R three at a later date.
I mean, yeah, we could do that, it could be added.
So by putting in our, by putting it in commercial, that the only way you can do it Airbnb is get there.
Have to be C.
So we're doing it the most restricted.
Pretty much so.
Mm-hmm.
Which we can always make it softer if we want.
Right, right.
But, uh, put, put something in there, don't beat around the bush at it, man, for where it needs to be at.
All right. So what we need to do is make a recommendation to council for this?
Yeah.
All right.
That starts the ball rolling. What about the issue, what about, like, for example, with the fire department in here?
Check that out.
Let that fall into the state of Ohio.
Yeah.
Where we fall out, let them handle that, that's, we don't know if I can.
That sounds fine.
Now, are you okay with the idea that the short-term rental host is around, or somebody's around? I mean, you're basically putting some responsibility on whoever's gonna operate something like this, and also, um, the idea of, well, I'm renting a place, I think I'm gonna go away for a month, I'll just put it on Airbnb. Only if the owner of the property says that's a great idea, um, so that's in there too, which I think is kind of important.
Yeah, that makes sense, and I think there should be somebody around that's accountable. You know, a lockout, or whatever, you know, somebody else would have a key, something, you know, the dishwasher don't work, the hot water heater don't work, something.
Right, basically, how Makel, we're talking about how Makel would run their thing out there.
Yeah.
They're going to run their, my thought is, whether we adopt this or not, they're going to run this thing probably more restrictive than we may be even talking, but again.
But our model should be kind of follow along what they're doing, and it, it doesn't contradict what they're proposing to do, and we kinda like that, the idea.
Yeah, all right, anybody wanna make that?
I'll make a motion, recommend to council.
Okay.
With, with the fire department.
Yeah, we're striking.
Strike the fire department.
Yeah.
And, and that would be in commercial.
Commercial zoning districts only.
Yes. So we have a motion, do we have a second?
All second.
We have a motion and a second. So the recommendation to council is for, uh, short-term rentals in commercial, with, uh, up to fire inspection. Dan, if you would?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes, to the recommendation.
Bryce?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Okay, down to commission comments, anybody done any comments?
Industrial property, so, from Vienna.
Nor could anybody else.
Great.
You know what's, I'll just throw out this comment, when you guys were looking at storage facilities, I forget how many years ago it was, Lance, I don't know if you remember, but somebody had proposed buying one of the lots in the industrial park. This is years ago, and he was gonna build storage facilities, the zoning fit, but if you look at the cost of the land in the industrial park, I'm not sure that you could afford to buy and put up storage buildings.
Yeah.
Good point.
And this was out front, is where it was that this guy was looking, so.
Any public comments?
Yes, if I may, I wanna come back to the storage, uh, units, uh, and, and I, I think you, you, you folks did an admirable job of, uh, picking and going through that piece by piece, but maybe something to think about, if we had a list of, uh, different places that this gentleman might inquire about purchasing, or something within the community, uh, it might just be an idea of, of giving them a, a, a position, a place to go to look, uh, rather than maybe just, uh, saying that, uh, well, you know, you, you're gonna need to go look and, and then, and come back to us, but if we had a lot of these, these little bits and pieces of parcel in our community, it might be something to positively point them in a direction where they, they could maybe settle, uh, and, uh, and build, or whatever, so, thank you.
Dan, thank you very much, uh, for that comment, but, um, you weren't here to see me leave this meeting, to go catch those guys out in the parking lot, so, done.
Thanks, Lance, I don't know, I, I just sit here and listen, and it was just a thought.
That's a good thought. It's a very good thought. Thanks, Skip.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn? I'll make that motion.